Good evening, everyone. McIlroy, can you please do the call?
Trustee Wiggly.
Present.
Trustee McIlroy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Amadu.
Here. Thank you.
So we're reconvening from regular sessions and item 4.2, the report out on closed session from June 23rd is discuss superintendent's contract and may recommendations. And then moving to item 4.3, report out on closed session from June 28th, provided direction to real property negotiator. Again, welcome everyone to the last fiscal year board meeting for Redwood City Elementary. Those that need Spanish interpretation. Si requiere interpretación al español, por favor llame al 978-990-5137 y presione 8377041 y el signo de número para la contraseña. If you're speaking to the board, the public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concerns, whether or not the issues are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card available at the entrance if you're in person and if you're online, if you could, please fill out a Google sheet. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you will be called to the podium at the time the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic. Otherwise, no. And are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to ask that line 9 to be moved to section 10.
I'm sorry, line 9. To where?
Section 10, action items.
Okay. Any others? And then I'd like to ask if we could move the approval of 13.1 to consent. If there are no questions.
With that, can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All this in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Thank you. Moving on to item 9, bond program consent items. Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All this in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And so moving on to item 10, bond program action item. Again, the approval of construction management services amendment number four with R G M K for tough community schools.
I just wanted briefly call this out because I thought it was pretty excellent. They came in under budget and are crediting the district back. So just wanted to note that for the record because that's pretty awesome. That's all I have to say about that.
Incredited back 172,06182. Yeah, I was pleased to see that too. So I'm glad you called that out. Good idea.
There should, there should. There should be a motion or just someone.
I move to approve that.
Second.
All this in favor?
Aye.
Can you guys hear me? We can't hear you. Can you guys hear me?
I think you.
Will, your mouth is moving, but we can't hear you.
I'm unmuted.
It's because we're not.
Oh. Oh.
Oh.
Oh, hold on. Is that you?
We're not getting room audio. I don't think it's you.
You can, we could turn on one of the computers.
Let me get my. All right. Let me see if it'll work.
Right again, Will.
Can you guys hear me now? Can you guys hear me now?
Okay. Okay, try it now.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
So thank you, guys. I just wanted to mention that once we complete the final scope at Garfield and John Gill, our team's actually trending to come in under budget on the construction management general conditions at those two sites as well. So we're hoping for some additional good news. Come, you know, the, hopefully the first meeting in August. And thank you, guys.
Thank you, as always.
Thank you.
Okay, and then so moving on to item 11, 11.1, discussion on local indicator measure for the California dashboard.
Go ahead, Fisher. Go ahead, Liz.
Okay. This is a component that needs to be shared with the board at the same time that the approval of the LCAP takes place. And so you've probably remembered this from years past. The information is not quite as robust as the information that we looked at last time, but these are required metrics to present to you. And so this will be information that is displayed on the California dashboard when that is publicized, which will probably be in either late November or early December of this year. And at the end of this presentation, you'll see what that will look like on the dashboard. But again, just the requirements that the reason that we're doing this is that all of our stakeholders are entitled to see information about our school and as part, our district is part of the accountability system. And this provides a quick overview. And honestly, the overview is super quick because with all of the the surveys and the assessments that have been taking place in the spring, not many people filled this out. And so this has been the same case every year. And so I, at the end of the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about some of the ways we're thinking of adding this information to the panorama survey and the other surveys that our teachers take as well, so that we get a more robust response. So as you know, for a couple of years, the dashboard was not displayed. But it is again, and there are six state indicators, which we have seen in the past. And there are five local indicators. And that's what you're going to be seeing tonight are the results of our surveys for the local indicators. And those are the items in green. And these indicators must be updated annually. And the metric is, are they, did we meet the expectation? Did we not meet it or have we not met it for two or more years? And that's kind of up to us to determine what met means. And then we report this to the board in conjunction with the approval of the LCAP. And then, as I said earlier, it will be displayed on the California dashboard when it is published. So the first one is, the state priority one is basic services. And this basically is what is reported out in the Williams report that you receive to let you know that we have highly qualified teachers, that our facilities are all in good repair and that there have been no deficiencies. And we have textbooks for everybody. And so basically, we report out on that two or three times over the year. And so we can say that we have met that standard. State priority two is the implementation of the state academic standards. And that is through a survey. We're asking teachers, there's a self reflection tool, it's a Google form that we send out. And again, very small turnout. These are the numbers of people who filled this out. But again, this was after the panorama survey where many people filled out panorama survey. And they're probably thinking, why do I have to do this again? So we're looking at how we can combine those in the fall, in the spring of next year. So the majority of our small responses put us at level three, which we consider as being met in terms of this expectation for the implementation of academic standards. And part of this as well is the use of instructional materials and making them available for teachers to use to be able to teach the academic standards. And we feel that next year we'll have a more positive response also when it comes to the primary grades because of the new curriculum everybody will be receiving. Policies and programs, do we have these in place so that we can support students, teachers in delivering instruction around the academic standards? And again, we believe that we have met that standard based on the responses from our teachers and then other adopted academic standards. And again, this was not as robust this year as we believe it will be next year when we have a much more robust music program as well as steam. But we still believe that we've met the standard for this year. Continuing with priority two, the support for teachers and administrators. Again, we've got the responses here. Believe that this qualifies as having met. State priority three, again, the survey was sent out to families. And we asked the schools to give us names and emails of families who are more involved in the school, who might be able to answer these questions with a little bit more knowledge. So we asked for site council, D LAC, represent, E LAC representatives. And we had 96 responses, again, a much smaller response in comparison to the panorama survey. So what we did was we incorporated the responses from this survey along with the panorama survey to develop our, our metrics. And we believe that building relationships between school staff and family was met because we had a high, a higher rating scale and as we had a four out of five, as well as we took a look at the responses on the panorama survey, which again were high responses. And then we've also got building partnerships for student outcomes. Again, you can see what the questions were that they were asked and the responses, as well as the responses from the panorama survey. Seeking input for decision making. Again, these were the questions that the families were asked and the response rate, as well as panorama survey information. State priority six is school climate. And this is what we also use the panorama survey for with responses from the students as well. And this is grades three through five and the responses. And again, this was information that you saw last week, grade six through eight. Broad course of study means that students have access to all subject areas that they're not limited in the programs and access to curriculum. We believe also again, that next year this will be even broader because all students will have opportunities to have electives in the middle schools as well as in the primary grades with their steam and music. Okay, so we said that we've met that. And that basically this is what the information will look like on the website. There is a brief narrative for each of these items. And that will be the narrative that is, we put on the California dashboard. We put that in by hand and that we have said that we've met the expectation for the, the different items. We can't exceed, right? We either meet or we don't meet, right? And so we've said that we've met. And that's that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Liz, for the presentation. Were there any questions?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any comments about it or questions about it. Thanks for putting it together. I think the other data sources that are leading into it are more valuable to be able to look at and be able to root cause. This is such, it's a high level aggregate meant for someone to scan and understand. But thank you for doing it. I know that we have to get it done by this meeting so that we can approve the LCAP at the same time.
Thank you. And I think my only comment for this, it would be, I haven't looked for through the website, but just to make sure that it's at a place where parents, easily for parents to be able to find it. So that would just be.
On our website or on the California dashboard?
Um, are we supposed to put some of this information on our website?
So this particular information goes directly to the California dashboard.
Okay.
But the LCAP and so this information is pretty much also contained in some of the other things that we post. We could post this slide deck, but basically it's meant for the more of the statewide accountability system.
And for some reason, I thought just, I don't know what part of the presentation I was thinking, our website. And so, I mean, I know that this is the dashboard, but there was something that I thought was going to be put on our website. So that's what I was making that comment, but.
We certainly could.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't want to add more if we don't have to for Jorge, because I know he does a great job. But, you know, it was just a comment because I thought it was gonna go up on our website.
So it'd be more beneficial to, in some way, have the panorama survey a link to it. Because this is for the state, but I think if you want to look for Redwood City in particular, for our community members, staff, parents, I think our own panorama survey results would be better. So if we can get a link to that, would that suffice?
Yeah, that would probably be great. Yeah.
Let me work with working on that.
Much agreed. I mean, I think the, there's a big concern here, micro revolution. It's just like, it's small N. And Liz, you called it out directly, like versus the panoramas survey. So it's like, this is maybe somewhat directionally helpful, but just the N is so small, you have a lot of sampling bias issues of like, well, who bothered to respond and how does that sway our results more than other? That said, I'm looking forward to some of these numbers going up into the right with the new curriculum rollout, so.
Okay, so I'm moving on to 11.2, discussion on the 2023 Golden Bell Awards.
Sorry, before we move on, someone did raise their hand. So I'm not sure if you guys want to take it or there is no speaker card. Afterwards, okay.
Okay, Jacqueline, can you please fill out a Google form, please? And then, yeah, go ahead if you want to. Can you unmute her? Okay, Jacqueline, can you unmute yourself?
Hola, me escuchan? Sí. Muchas gracias. Bueno, si quería agregar algo a lo que acabamos de observar porque observo que la muestra de la que se tomaron los datos no es suficiente porque es muy bajo el número de alumnos que han contestado a la encuesta y por lo tanto creo que no es muy objetivo porque en la, en la, en el último cuadro que mostraron no se refleja la realidad de las escuelas como la inseguridad que siguen presentando. Y pareciera que la prioridad seis no es, no es prioridad porque dicen que hay un clima favorable y que los niños se sienten seguros al estar en la escuela. Y considero que no es así. Por los últimos tres incidentes que pasaron en Hoover, este, pues esto muestra que al menos en Hoover algo está pasando y me gustaría que, que a lo mejor se retomara esta encuesta o que se tomaran en cuenta los incidentes que han pasado para que en la, en la prioridad seis se implementaran algunas otras estrategias porque el clima de seguridad de la escuela no es favorable. Estoy hablando de la escuela Hoover. Y gracias.
So what she thinks is that the results that are reflected in the, in the dashboard and then in the dashboard that's being sent to the state does not reflect a great number of students that responded. But if you look at the panorama survey, which is where we're taking the information from, you can see the amount, the number of students who have responded. So it's a, it's a good response. She's specifically talking about Hoover and what has taken place at Hoover that should, it doesn't, the last three incidents that have taken place do not reflect well with the survey. So what I can do is between myself and Michelle and Jorge, we can get back to her and really explain this because this is, yeah, because this is, this is district wide, but yes, there is a portion about Hoover. But if you look at the, the number, that's okay. Don't put it back up. If you look at the numbers from the panorama survey, there were a lot of students that did. But she's referring to Hoover. But the state is referring to the district as a whole. So Jorge and Michelle and myself will have.
Yeah. Well, and maybe somebody can translate this. But one comment I would have, if I understand the comment correctly, we did talk about at the last board meeting specifically looking at the climate survey and making sure that the principals and the teachers at each school site were looking at the climate surveys for their classroom, for their school sites and, you know, responding and doing things about that. So as you just said, this is district wide data. But know that at Hoover School and at each school, the principal and the teachers are looking at that data and will be doing something with it. Right? I mean, I think that's accurate.
That is, that part, yeah.
Yeah. And so I just want to say, we did talk about that just last week at, at that meeting because we actually looked at detailed at the panoramic survey.
Do we know?
Yeah, it's online. Yeah, yeah. So, so what I'll do is I will get Michelle and Jorge and we can definitely talk this more through. Go. We can talk about Hoover, number one, about the three incidents, which we all know about. But number two, to also explain that what this is for, what the previous slide that Liz was showing was for the dashboard about what was being met district wide, district wide. And if you look at the panorama survey, there are a lot of students that did, you know, respond. Well, we can go back and look at Hoover, but we're not just looking at Hoover. We're looking at the district as a whole. But I can explain that to her when we meet with her.
Okay. And then assuming that she's getting interpretation, then she's.
She is. She's getting interpretation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So then moving on to 11.2, discussion on the 2023 Golden Bell Awards.
No, no, I just want to write her name down real quick. Hey, the Golden Bell Awards. So this was, we have three, I will not say programs, but additions that we are moving forward with. Because if you look at the equity one, the equity one was not a program. It was something that was developed during the time of the pandemic. And we had felt that we needed to move forward with our equity mission, our vision and our values. And by doing so, as we were going in that direction, we and maybe one other school district in the county was also doing it. So we felt that this was worthy of moving for, towards a Golden Bell Award under one of the criteria. The others that you see here is definitely the, the immersion program. And then we also have the, it's the Clifford, it's a Clifford N U A. So in the, as Jorge and I were discussing, in the future, what we're going to do is we're going to make sure that we look at the Kent Awards very carefully. Because when we do the Kent Awards, many times there are several schools that are submitting. And there's normally like one that is chosen from, you know, each district. So what we're gonna do is keep track of that. And then also, the heavy lifting is done during the Kent Awards because a lot of that information can then be developed into the Golden Bell. And when we realize this was due, I guess Friday, and we need the principals and so forth, and to get some pictures and some of them that are already gone. So this is why we have these three that are moving forward. Definitely the N U A and the Mandarin Immersion. I, the equity one did meet one of the criteria. So that's why we're putting it in there.
If I read the criteria, it's Jorge on the call. I don't know how detailed you, but I, I think that we can, we can apply for more, but I think in the end they'll only give us up to two, right? Oh, one?
That's what Jorge said. Jorge is on the call. Jorge is on the call.
Okay.
There, it is one that we get.
Okay.
They're gonna choose one of them.
Yeah.
And then it goes out, gets to the broader group and the, and the state. And from that, is it only one that's selected?
I, I don't, you know, I quickly read the Golden Bell criteria, so.
Right, so I, yeah.
But, but I think the point is you can, you can apply in more programs. It gives you more chance to do it.
Right, so, but as I said previously, what we're going to do from this point on is make sure for, make sure when we're submitting for a Kent Award, we have all that information. And then it's there and we just need to develop it more to meet certain criteria. So we already have it. So we don't have to worry. Right now, I, I just told Jorge and myself, there's just, June 30th, we know there's a deadline. I'm sure it's that way every year, right?
Right. And I, I apologize because I know I brought this to your attention late. Partly I was thinking, oh, it's in San Francisco. And then I realized we hadn't submitted anything and I saw that come through. So, yeah, you know, and again, if we can't do it this year, we can't do it this year. But if you've got, it's, it looks like you're ready to go. So that's. Jorge, you're awesome, is all I can say, seriously.
Grappling with.
I, I just thought it'd be so nice for our employees to be recognized and it's local, so they, more of them could go.
The last one was, was when previous superintendent was here and we were in.
It was all.
We were in San Diego and wasn't it Roosevelt? Because they were ringing that bell on the airplane.
It's very fun, yeah. Anyway, they loved it. It's a really, they, they treat the ceremony like an Academy Awards kind of thing. So it's a really big deal.
Yeah.
And this had to be agendized, by the way. The board has to actually approve it or just acknowledge that.
Acknowledge it and it's, it's part of the agenda and it'll be part of, you know, the notes. So, yeah. All right.
Thank you, Jorge. Thank you, John and principals. You guys are awesome.
Great, thank you. So moving on to consent items. Can I please get a motion?
So moved?
Seconded.
All this in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to 13.2, approval of the local control accountability plan LCAP for the 2023-24 square.
I have nothing more to say.
The 103 pages themselves.
I just want to once again thank Liz for all your work on this, seriously.
And just remind everybody, we had a lengthy discussion like the last meeting. The public hearing, so this is why, you know, we can just say thanks to Liz and the Ed Services and all the stakeholders that were involved creating the LCAP and the board members, also board members, yeah. But I also, one thing I think we forgot to mention as much last time and because you had sent us the video from our special session that we had on Friday, the students, awesome, just seeing that, that their voice and the ones that were selected to go and represent their school. And just hearing how for, you know, many of them even just being in the process was really touching and they were saying that they normally don't get picked for that. So our selection criteria actually was reaching out kind of and pulling in students that, that may not have always had a voice in the process there. So I thought it was a really neat, so kudos to the team that put that together and actually executed on it. And thanks for sharing the video.
And you know, right now that you're saying that with student voice, just thinking while I'm listening to what you're saying, do we, just like the student said, they don't really get chosen? Do we kind of, whether we want to say, open it up or show maybe those videos to the rest of the students so that maybe next year they could, you know what I mean? Say, you know what, I want to do that. And what can I do to prepare for it? So I think that would be a good thing to do. I mean, just a suggestion.
I, I could see us at large doing more to engage the student body as a, as a governance body.
I mean, because I think there are times.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, and again, you know, communication wise, again, kudos to Jorge and his team. But I, again, things like that, I think we need to just be a little bit more vigilant so that we can get out there to all our students, right? So that they can have a choice.
Look at your peers and the awesome things they did. Don't you want to be cool like that?
Because I think a lot of the times, some students might just hear from other students that did it, but there's so many more that won't even know what they're talking about. So if we just open it up, you know, again, it was just.
Is there something cheesy we could do, like present the students who are involved with like a certificate of recognition?
Oh.
Okay, you're too stoked to have.
But she made a beautiful certificate that was signed.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve. Seconded.
All this in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The 13.3, approval of the 2023-24 proposed budget for Redwood City.
Easier to follow her tonight. In the agenda is the 182 page budget book. Uh, in the agenda is the, uh, hundred and eighty-two, uh, page budget book, uh, for approval tonight, there was no material changes between, uh, the presentation last week, uh, and tonight. And, uh, with, if there are questions, uh, I'd be happy to answer them. Uh, if not, uh, I'll turn back over to the board for approval.
There's also one of these weird things where we've had really extensive discussion back and forth over a hundred played page plus document. Um, but the discussions have been, had, at least I don't have any new questions since last time. Anyone else have anything that occurred to them?
I just want to say again, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, just like Liz, it's a team with fiscal services as well and, and all the departments.
Awesome, thank you. So with that, can I get a motion to approve thirteen point two?
I move to approve the budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thirteen point four, adoption of the twenty twenty-three twenty-four statement for recent, for reserves in excess of the minimum state recommended level.
Uh, this resolution also has no changes from last week, uh, outlining, uh, the reason for excess reserves of approximately a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for our revolving fund and stores, uh, and assigned for mental health reform and substitute leave.
And with that, is there any questions? If not, can I please get a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thirteen point five, adoption of resolution thirty-eight, year and budget transfers.
Did you mean resolution thirty-eight is so, uh, at this time of the year, as we're preparing to close books, uh, we can, uh, preparing close books as well as paying our final bills of this fiscal year. If we need to move money around to cover, uh, expenses, uh, through the end of the fiscal year, this allows us to do so without further board action during this time period.
Yeah, no comments, I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to thirteen point six, adoption of resolution thirty-nine, the education protection account for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four.
Thank you, uh, resolution thirty-nine, uh, is funded aside based on Prop thirty, approximately one point two million dollars that we have to show how we're going to spend those dollars. Uh, you can see from the, uh, worksheet provided with the resolution, uh, that all of those funds will be for teacher salaries.
I'll move to approve.
Oh, oh, no, no, I do not. Oh, good, good, Janet, I, I made a motion to approve. Awesome.
Okay, and I'll second.
Okay, too much fun. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
I think everybody's excited being in the last forum meeting. Okay, and moving on to board and superintendent's report.
Today, I completed my master's in governance. Fancy certificate, nothing like that, so. Learned a lot about how to be a responsible school board member that I hope I can apply to be a good compatriot for all of you, so, thank you.
Congratulations, and I don't have anything to report this week.
Only thing is that there was a quick bond team meeting last week.
And I don't have anything either.
You all received, um, the memo before it went down to the Kennedy community about Chandra. Very pleased, very pleased, we're all really excited about that. That for me.
Okay, great. So moving on to information item, um, contract update information and credit course summary. Are there any questions? Moving on to fifteen point two, information on the Samatelle County Investment Fund for May twenty twenty-three. No questions either? Thank you. Uh, and then so moving on to correspondence.
I'm in a WhatsApp group for, um, my, the just graduated second grade class, Ed, am I? And I just want to read aloud this short message, um, just as a data point. Hey, does anyone know if the Redwood City School District is going through a huge change, question mark, question mark? North Star Principal is also leaving and they just introduced the new principal, first principal Catherine is now prin- principal. Uh, it was all of a sudden to us, maybe in the works for a while, let me know if anyone knows anything, thanks. So just a little ambiguous, but just maybe a district update that we could give, just here are the changes in the district writ large.
We, we, we normally do that right at, when we come back in August. That makes sense. I still have some openings.
Hopefully we can fill this.
And, and, yeah, and administration, so as soon as that takes place, but we normally do that when we come back in August.
Sounds good, thank you.
And I think for, for correspondence, did all of you guys get an invitation for the CLSVA, which is the California Mathему Schools Board Association?
Well, I'm on their email list, so what was the invitation for?
It was for their conference coming up in September.
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys didn't, maybe I'll just, can I do that, forward it to you guys or send it to you or?
You send it to me and I'll forward it to you.
Okay, just wondering if you guys got it, because I mean, it would be, I, I know I'm interested in that.
It's supposed to be a very good conference.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Um, so moving on to other business suggested items for future agenda.
Spent a lot of time on that. Did we do that Friday? It feels like, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Great, um, so item eighteen-one, changes to the board meeting calendar, are there any? No? Okay, great. So with that, it is seven thirty-seven and is our last school board meeting for this fiscal year. So would someone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Seconded.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Yay.